...the council for inviting us down to talk a little bit about the transit integration study. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Dennis Doyle. I'm the planning director of Ulster County. I'm also something, I'm also the director of something called the Ulster County Transportation Council. A little bit more on that, just so you understand what we do. The Transportation Council has a responsibility to do transportation planning.
Dennis, can you interrupt for a moment? You just played it good way. If people don't know you, then you might not know.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you to go around.
Yeah, if we start with you, we'll just go around and introduce ourselves.
Mary Ann Bell.
Deb Brown.
I know Deb.
Renee Stebbilis.
Steve Shabbitt.
Who care?
And I'm Doug Coop.
Lynn Ecker.
Jim Noble.
Tony Davis.
And I have with me a staff tonight, the principal transportation planner, Brian Slack, who's been working on the project and project manager. But I would just wanna just give you a sense of what the Transportation Council does. The Transportation Council has a responsibility to do programming and planning, transportation planning for the county, basically for the county as a whole. And we're also responsible to a larger region because, believe it or not, Ulster County, particularly southern Ulster County, is part of something called the Transit and Transportation Management Area. So we interface with Orange County and Duchess County as well, and we do transportation planning for about eight hundred, a little over eight hundred thousand people in those, in those three counties. The city of Kingston is actually its own metropolitan area. There's about fifty-three thousand in that area. So you have your own designation as a metropolitan area. This is important because when we start talking about funding sources, it gives you a sense of what that, what that happens. I would like to also congratulate the council, the mayor, and the city engineer's office for the on, the above schedule or ahead of schedule and on budget completion of the, of the Green Hill Avenue Bridge.
Under budget.
Under budget. I thought it was. I wasn't sure. I know we transferred, we transferred some money to, to make sure that you had enough to get through the project. And that's one of the things that we do. We actually program federal dollars for particular projects. We have, for example, recently programmed federal dollars for the city to do some repaving on Hurley Avenue. It's part of a block program that we had. And how we got involved in this project and what this project is, was the Transportation Council was aware of an agreement between the city and Ulster County with respect to sales tax. In that agreement, there's this language that talks about looking at the integration of the two transit systems. So both the city of Kingston and Ulster County asked the Transportation Council if they could help them make that decision. And so we began an effort to take a look at what transit, transportation integration looked like. I will have to tell you that it's not the first effort we've had. We did transit, transit studies in this county in 2003. We updated those transit studies again in 2005 or 2006. We actually looked at integration of the two systems at that particular time. We took another whole look at transit in 2012, adjusting routes. We suggested to the city that there were routes that needed to be adjusted in the city at the same time. And then finally, we got involved in this particular study. And the goal of the study is essentially to give the decision makers the ability to sort of make the decision and looking at all of the aspects of what transit means. And I would have to, I have to tell you this, and that is, is that from my perspective looking at this from the county back to the city is, the county has no overriding desire to essentially take over the system. So when you look at this, I think the main thing, this is your decision, it's really the city's decision, is to either go ahead or not go ahead. And we're trying to give you the best information that we can give you in terms of why that decision is important and how to make that decision. One of the things we're looking at is efficiency for the current operation. I can tell you that you've gone from about a hundred and fifty thousand riders to less than eighty thousand riders. Most of your riders are what they call captured riders right now, is they use the bus because they have to. They don't have other ways of getting around. I'll give you a comparison. Ulster County's ridership went from around two hundred thousand to a little over four hundred thousand during the same time period. We've been actively engaged in terms, in terms of changing routing, looking at an organic way that the transit system operates, looking at destinations and making those changes as we needed, as we needed to do so. So the first thing that we, we're gonna look at is we did a, we did an inventory of the, of the system itself. We're now in the process of doing route optimization, which is essentially looking at where, where the buses go in the city now versus where the destinations are. We do have people on our, on your buses, I had people on your buses Friday. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and I think we had some people on the buses today.
And Saturday as well.
And Saturday as well, to take a look at where the drop offs take place and where, and where the, the enlightenment's take place as well, to get a better handle on how the system functions. We understand, we met with the drivers, explained to the drivers what we were doing so they had, they had a sense. We didn't wanna surprise them, all of a sudden having people on their buses that they didn't know what they were doing. So we, we went with them, gave them a sense of what we were going to do, why we were doing it, et cetera. But I have to, I have to reinforce the fact that there are no decisions or paths forward that have sort of been laid out that you must follow. This is literally trying to give you the best information in order for you to make it, to make the decision as a city. One of the things that we wanted to just touch on is, your sister city, if I can call it that, in Poughkeepsie has gone through a turmoil in terms of trying to make a similar decision with essentially the council fighting with the mayor and some of the issues with respect to that in terms of county takeover. I know that that, that has gone through and the county is running additional routes in the city of Poughkeepsie. We wanna make sure that we do this in a much, in an orderly fashion. I don't wanna, I don't wanna disparage the efforts with respect to the city of Poughkeepsie, but we wanna avoid some of their pitfalls. They've also done a great deal of good. They've gone back out to the community and said, "How are we doing with these routes? Do they work? Don't they work?", et cetera. But essentially, the city, the city decided to go out of business and the county then scrambled to figure out how to run its routes and how to, how to make, how to make the, make the best out of what the city's decision was. We wanna avoid that. We wanna basically say, "Here are all the federal assets. Here's what we're going to do in terms of routing. Here's the expectations. Bring that back to the council unless the council makes a decision." So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian, who can give you a lot much more of the detail. And I thank you for your time tonight, and if you have any questions after tonight, please feel free to reach out to the office and call us. You can certainly sit down and meet with us anytime you choose, and you can give us a call or send us an email if you have any other questions with respect to that.
That's right. Thanks, Dennis. Our contact information is on the PowerPoint presentation if you don't have it. I think I probably interacted with most of you at one point or another through the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, so I think you know how to get ahold of me. We, as Dennis mentioned, we met with the bus drivers last Wednesday. It was a productive discussion. This evening is really about you. We wanna be here to answer your questions. We've been working in the dark, behind closed doors, for some time now. We started the study, the contract was executed, I think, in September of last year. But we really, we formed our technical advisory committee. We have a member from the York State DOT Region Eight Transit Staff, along with Kristen Wilson and Tony Rojek from the city of Kingston. The county executive's office is sitting on the advisory committee as well, and of course, the Transportation Council. So, people, I think, have been wondering what's been going on with the study, but we really have been pretty busy just doing the initial inventory and scanning the two systems, comparing the two systems, and doing the, the background research on what integration means to the city and what it means to UCAT. A big part of that is researching FTA rules and guidelines and US Department of Labor rules and guidelines. Just a significant component is US DOL Section thirteen C, which we looked very close to that, and that's summarized in the PowerPoint presentation. I'll get into thirteen C a little more in a moment. Some of the key takeaways, the presentation we have here was delivered to Mayor Noble and County Executive Ein back in June, and we're essentially just pivoting off of that. We have, in terms of the project schedule, we believe we'll be complete with a full complete draft plan sometime around Labor Day, we suspect. It'll, they'll be cutting it a little close. I think it might go beyond that. So we'll have our completed draft plan around Labor Day. Some of the takeaways, state, federal regulatory requirements that must be met in order to manage integration are all navigable. There's no set connected dots on how to do a system integration. We looked far and wide across the New York State back in history. There are not too many examples that fit perfectly with the situation we have in Ulster County and the city of Kingston. Ithaca, Tompkins County had relatively similar situation back in the mid-eighties, late nine, early nineties, and there's some Utica, some other, and also Nassau Suffolk County. Different systems, you know, some transit systems are customized based on populations, based on funding sources. They all operate a little bit differently. And so there aren't any really clear-cut rules on how to do systems integration, but we know that we need to meet the Department of Labor regulations and requirements, and we also need to consider the assets. If city buses to, if the city of Kingston rather, is to get out of the transit system, transit business, what's gonna happen to those routes? And what's gonna happen to the individuals who are served on those routes and who depend on those routes? Essentially, UCAT would is ready and willing to pick up those routes if that is, is to be the case. And that's really, I think, embodied in, at least in small part, in the, in the sales tax agreement. Thirteen C discusses and deals with federal transit workers and what their rights are. If a transfer does take place, it essentially outlines how their jobs or employment can be protected, but it isn't clear because it's never really been dealt with in the courts how exactly thirteen C specifically applies to our situation. But the, the rights of those employees are definitely protected under Department of Labor law. There are some spatial concerns, and there are concerns regarding liquidation of capital assets. Essentially, we would look to transfer those assets. The FTA, when it provides grant money to purchase buses, to purchase equipment, to purchase building space, expects municipality to get a useful life out of that capital purchase. And so we'll, we would have to analyze what the useful life of all those capital assets are and come up with essentially a dollar amount that the, the transfer of those assets can be cleared and above board, and the FTA would have to sign off on that.
And just to be clear, if the, if those capital assets are transferred to another transit agency for transit use, then there's no issues associated with that? The main thing is, is that if they have, I'm gonna give you an example. Typical transit buses have a twelve or fourteen-year life. If you only have ten years on your transit vehicle and you want to keep the transit vehicle in, as part of the city's fleet, then what would end up happening is if you have an asset, you have to pay that difference back to the federal government in terms of its useful life. If you don't, and you decide, and it gets transferred to Ulster County for transit use, then there's no, there's no, there's no charge to the city. And in terms of things that we've looked at, in terms of that, where your useful life is, it would seem odd that, that if you made a decision to go ahead, that the city would wanna keep buses that have useful lives. There's really not a lot of that, not a lot of value in it for you to do that rather than transfer them to us. A, and B is, looking at that, the two things that come out that actually have useful lives that may, the city may wanna keep is a bushwash that's actually down in the DPW. We don't know exactly that useful life is. We're trying to get an answer on that. And then there's some, some lifting stations, some mobile lifts that you actually use as well, that the city may wanna keep as well. But those are, those are things, those are discussions that are down the line and not really, I don't think a decision maker or a dealmaker with respect to whether or not the city decides to go ahead. I'll leave it at that.
Whenever we talk about integration, sharing services, municipal consolidation, a big carrot is cost savings. That's, I think, a big motivational force behind making these decisions for municipalities. We have identified cost savings. There are certainly some cost savings to be had, but quite frankly, they're relatively meager or modest, let's say. A big part of cost savings is elimination of redundancy of service. One, one big cost, one modest cost savings that, that always sticks in my mind is in fuel purchases. Ulster County Area Transit has a large volume fuel storage facility, and they have the capacity to purchase fuel in bulk. And the last time we looked at it carefully, in 2012, we estimated that the savings in fuel purchases alone could be as much as sixty thousand dollars if you were to just do fuel savings solely through Ulster County Area Transit. So when you look across the board, there's other areas where savings can be identified. Reduction in administrative staff could be achieved, but at the end of the day, if you're running three routes, you still need the same number of drivers. You're gonna have to have those drivers and those buses run the routes to, to make sure that, that the level of service is met.
And we're looking at this, quite frankly, from a county's perspective. If, if the decision is made that the city doesn't wanna stay in business, we would look at this as, as essentially trying to provide better service, not, not to save money on the service. We think that those funds can actually be applied to provide better service rather than essentially to try to save money on the service. The other thing that's not here that is difficult to quantify is avoided costs. The city had, if you look at its bus purchases, the city's bus purchases, which are intensely capital, about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a bus, the current buses you're running. You used ARARA, American Recovery Act money to get that, so they, it's a hundred percent funded. That kind of dollars is not around right now. In addition, when you look at the federal money that's available to the city, it's about four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year that the city currently gets in federal dollars. The city currently uses those federal dollars in, in what they call preventive maintenance operating and operating assistance and administration. So you're currently expending all of those dollars with no dollars being available for capital funds. You're gonna have some capital issues staring you in the face in the next three to five years. And those capital issues are not small. And we don't know, quite frankly, one of the things that we don't know is, we do not know where the federal government is headed. We know that the allocations relative to transit in the, in the past with respect to this, what they call UZA, which is, which is short for Urbanized Area, have not gone much beyond about a million dollars, nine hundred and some odd thousand dollars, of which we split fifty, fifty with the city because the county provides services within the UZA. So the agreement is that we split it fifty, fifty. The, some of the current thinking in, in Washington is actually to cut transit dollars. That would be devastating, I think, no matter what happens with regard to that, to both systems if that happens. But one of the things that you should be aware of is, is that, and this, this is speaking from the, from the Transportation Council's perspective, not necessarily from the county's perspective, is we do have some concerns about how we're gonna meet the capital needs in the future.
We've narrowed this down to three possible scenarios, which are summarized on page six of the PowerPoint. At the end of the day, we, we considered a lot of different alternatives. These are the three boiled down scenarios that we see taking place. There's the scenario one is the null alternative, that no integration takes place and services offered by the two separate systems would continue and go about the respective paths. Scenario two is UCAT, this integration takes place, then UCAT picks up the existing routes as they currently exist. That opens up some questions because of, there's some obvious redundancies in the system. UCAT's already operating in the city of Kingston through essentially a hub and spoke model going into Hanford Plaza, and that's where everybody needs to do, generally speaking, transfers if you're going from one system to the other. And it's really difficult to make it an efficient process, given the way these routes run. You're looking at one-hour headways for your city bus routes. D D and C for the bus to do a full loop is one hour. I mean, I've lived in other cities other than Kingston, and generally speaking, you don't wanna wait for much more than twenty minutes if you want your, your system to be productive and if you want people to use it in your line. One hour, particularly in the wintertime, if you need to go grocery shopping, run errands, get to medical appointments, it's, it's difficult. And I think that might be one of the reasons why ridership is down. The third scenario on page six, which, we don't wanna jump to conclusions, but it may offer one of the best alternatives, and that is looking at bus system route optimization. What does that mean? Right now, the, the city bus routes, the maps are included on the next page, page seven. I think they're included on another section, too, a better map that's included. The city bus routes are very.
Circuits.
Circuitous. I think one of our contractors and we worked consultants that we worked with before called it a deviated fixed route system, which is a bit of a contradiction in terms. You have a fixed route, but the bus drivers are able to deviate from it. That makes it really frustrating, I suspect, for certain riders when the bus lets it go by at the time you expect it to. And I think we've all been in situations where we've seen city bus going down a route and you're wondering, "Where is it going? Why is it here on the street?" And it, it can create some issues with, with timeliness and schedule. Route optimization is why we had ride checkers onboard the buses last week and Saturday and today, was to confirm and to begin to develop a model of what an optimal route might be. We did a countywide transit study in 2012 that looked at this in great detail. UCAT adopted all the findings in 2012, and, and the ridership has gone up. City bus did not adopt any of those findings that, and conclusions that we had. I have a copy of that study if you'd like to look at. But we're using that as a starting point, if you will, to say, "If we were to optimize this route to have it more efficient, to have more frequent service, how would you do it?" Because you still need to serve the same key nodal areas and the same services, the same destinations that people need to get to. So we're determining what those destinations are through survey, and I would strongly encourage you, the survey is on our, it's going to be, we're going to publicize it widely, but it's linked to the fact sheet and elsewhere. I would strongly encourage you to give that to your constituents and have them chime in if they depend on the system, if you lose the system. But we're looking for ways to make the system run better, so it serves the city of Kingston and its residents better. That's what routes, uh, system optimization is. And the third scenario would look at running a more efficient buses. Still providing leveled service to all the residents, but how do we get more frequent service? And some of that is reduction of redundancy. We have two buses, UCAT and bus, one behind the other, going down the same route. It just doesn't make any sense.
And one of the things that you should be aware of is that we're very conscious of trying to figure out with two separate systems, how do you get the buses and schedules to meet? So you change your schedule, we don't change ours, and all of a sudden, the two buses don't meet at the, at the middle of the points anymore. So that, that creates a bit of friction in trying, in trying to make sure that we, operationally in terms of how we adjust. The other thing is, is that there has been, until very recently, and it still exists on most routes within the city, there's a gentleman's agreement that basically says that if we're a UCAT operator, we can pick you up to the city and we can let you off in the city, but we can't do both. So if you're standing on Broadway and we're going down Broadway with a, with a UCAT bus and you get on, we can't let you off in the city. That's, that makes no sense to those folks that are using the buses, and it makes no sense that you're standing aside the road and we drive by you. And similarly, there is no operating authority for buses that you currently have outside of the city. So you're currently operating by agreement, and it's not clear how, how, how solid that agreement is, you do operate service into the senior citizen center in Fort Young, and you do operate a service to, believe it or not, the social services department, which is actually outside the city, outside the city routes. So those are the kinds of things that a single system sort of, that, those kinds of things disappear. And, and quite frankly, those are things that we can have conversations about even if they don't happen, even if a single system doesn't happen. One of the things that we did make, for example, recommendations was to essentially change the city routing to allow you to go outside the city even more in 2012 work, so that we weren't overlapping each other on some of these routes and some of these changes. I will tell you this, that the Ulster County system is challenged in terms of trying to make the, trying to make these systems work within the city. We're trying to service a county the size of, of Rhode Island. We run routes on a regular basis down at Ellenville, up to Shandaken, into, into Sawyers, and into New Paltz. And we are one of the few public transit carriers that have operating authority in other counties. We actually run routes out of New Paltz into Newburgh, and we actually run routes out of New Paltz and out of Kingston into Poughkeepsie. So we're running, we're running those routes, and those, those routes are very successful. Yeah, we're going to the Poughkeepsie train station.
That was why I asked for new residents. Do you, the bus go to the train station?
Yeah, yeah. The bus does. Yeah, new service.
That would be a new cat.
Right. And we're actually extending that service, I think, to Saturday, or we have extended it to Saturday. We haven't done it already. So we've talked enough. I hope you have questions.
And I've, I've had this conversation with constituents before and citywide people, and two things have come up. One, and the time is, and to wait for a bus. And the other one is from the workers that are currently employed by this, and their job security. And I'm assuming you guys are addressed, or want to be addressed that? Would this make the pickup and drop off time faster for residents of the city of Kingston?
We believe that there are some changes that we can do that will, that will reduce headways. The 2012 study basically shown that by changing some of the routing options and moving things around, we can reduce headways from an hour to about thirty minutes. Not the best, but it does, it did give you a sense that between thirty and forty minutes would be new headways just by making some changes, and that's with two systems. We believe that as we go through route optimization, we believe we'll be able to give you the better, a much more precise answer to those questions in terms of what will you anticipate headways will be. I would also say this, the city runs an extremely effective paratransit service throughout the city. You run a lot of paratransit work throughout the city. Your ADA requirements are basically three, about a half mile, three quarters of a mile, three quarters of a mile.
Yeah.
Also blocking routes. So you provide paratransit service throughout the city. Now, just so you know, since we run routes through the city as well, we provide paratransit services in the city. So we're backing each other up on paratransit, and sometimes if your folks are busy or you have issues, they end up, they end up with UCAT doing paratransit service in the city. Those are the kinds of things, a much more functional and straightforward and easy, single contact point, single dispatch point, which we change and I think make paratransit even more robust in the city than it is now. Given what I just told you, which is a lot of people that are using the system are captured riders, paratransit is, is critically important in some of the cities.
And what about the job scenarios?
Yeah, this is always a difficult one. What I would say to you is, is that in life, there's no guarantees. And to the extent that we met with the riders, we had this conversation with the riders and.
Drivers.
Drivers, sorry, the drivers and your riders. And they asked the same question. Can you guarantee us our job? And the short answer is, no. I can't guarantee the employees of UCAT their job, if there's issues associated with the, with cuts in transit. I can show you that here's the numbers of FTE equivalents, and here's the number of drivers that we anticipate we need. That doesn't show that we have, we have left drivers that you currently have now. So we would anticipate that there would be a very concerted effort to make sure that the current employees that can pass muster, there's always that, pass the necessary tasks, et cetera, would be picked up and carried into, carried into the UCAT system. The other thing I would say to you, and this is in conversations that we had with some of, with some of the leadership, is that there are needs within the city itself for the kinds of skills that these drivers have. So I'll give you the example in Poughkeepsie. Poughkeepsie ended up using their drivers from their bus system within the city, within the city system, because they had that, that, that much need for those kinds of skills within the city system. You've recently had some transfers out of, out of your, I think at least one, out of your bus system to other positions within the city. You currently have some openings in the city for drivers or for people with CDL licenses, et cetera, that, so it may not be, that, it may not be that those folks end up working for Ulster County. They may very well be needed here and, and wanna continue to work there. But one of the things that Brian did mention was thirteen C. Thirteen C has some protections associated with it. We will have to go through that process with, with, with respect to thirteen C if there are any layoffs. And if there are, then the, the certi basically says your first hire's back, assuming you can qualify. The other thing I would say to you, the good thing here is the unions represent, the union represents both parties. So UCAT is represented by CSCA, and the drivers in the city of Kingston are represented by CSCA. So that's, those are some good things. The other, the other examples that we were looking at, quite frankly, is private sector versus public sector. Poughkeepsie, for example, is a public transit system run by a private sector. So those kinds of transfers create some other issues associated with it. We're two public sector employees with similar break, pension plans, similar retirement plans, et cetera. Not the same, but similar.
Mary Ann, you have.
I have a couple of questions. Brian, you had said, "If the city wants to stay in business with transit, do we have that option to stay in business with the sales tax agreement?"
Here's, here's a short. Here's a short answer to that question. I can't, I don't believe that we're attorneys here and can figure that out. I'm not, what I would suggest to you is, is that...
And you don't have to answer it tonight, but it's a question, maybe a takeaway.
Yeah, from my perspective, we're looking at this as if you do. We're looking at this to say that no one's going to quote, force an entity to go out of business if it doesn't want to go out of business.
It's been a few months since I actually looked at that, the language of that agreement. It's just one sentence. And I think it's like, I think all it says is, we'll look at it, and if we can do it...
And we'll work together, work towards it.
And if we can do it without any additional cost to the county.
And it says also, no additional cost to the county, that's going to be an if proposition.
And then my other two questions are, and this can be a takeaway as well, we have the trolley bus in the city, and I don't see that mentioned anywhere. I don't know.
Cast its useful life. You can hang right on, you can keep those trolley buses.
That's what they're doing.
We'd be happy if you did.
And that's a non-traditional service. The city is more than welcome to continue to operate the trolley if they want to, but I don't believe they receive federal aid for operating of that service.
And then currently with events, there's three rides per second that continue with this agreement.
You know, what's great about UCAT, their former director, Bob DeBella, and their current director, Carol Hargrove, is their phone call way. And they take phone calls from the riders every day. They're all about customer satisfaction. And if there are major events, those are riders, those are fairs, they want to make sure they get their fares, and they want to make sure the riders are satisfied.
Sometimes it is a free ride, so.
Ulster County, just so you know, Ulster County's policy with respect to the special events, there is a policy in place. I can't say that it won't be changed, but current policy right now is nonprofit groups can request service for events. If it's approved, then those rides are free.
In the high school, we take it to the Miller complex on a daily basis, wondering if there's a certain word's going.
I think the difficulty with respect to some of this stuff...
It's just some food for thought and things that...
Nonprofit organizations and others, I don't think we have an issue with. I think where you run into issues is when you're performing it for public entities like the school district, et cetera, and you start doing that and not charging them. Technically...
It's charter service.
It's charter service, and it's frowned upon to the extent that it's not, at the federal level.
So if there is a merge...
You're not supposed to be, you're not supposed to be in competition with the private sector.
So if there is a merge, we lose, there would only be one lump sum of federal money for the combined service? Because currently, that's, the city bus gets a...
The city would no longer be a designated recipient for it.
So it would be the county.
The county would have to be a designated recipient. And to be frank with you, the money that's available to the city will not pay for the service that we would have to provide. It'll pay for the operating of that service, but probably not pay for the, for the capital needs of the system over a longer term.
Okay, thank you.
And we will look to other sources that the county has available to provide that service.
So I'm wondering, as you look at these other merger models, what are the, what's the range of institutional relationship between the city and the county if we did merge the two together?
Now, I think, I think we have to be careful about semantics. Mergers are more complicated than essentially going out of business. And there's several reasons for that. Merging the systems creates more, probably as many, if not more, issues than simply the city saying, we no longer like to be in the transit system, was the county willing to take it over? The good news here is, and that's quite frankly what happened in Poughkeepsie, they just said, we're going out of business and didn't budget for it. The good news here is, in making that decision, the city will have in front of it, this is what is being proposed to do. And the other good news is, I think, there was a question the other night about how you sort of keep the decisions with respect to transit local. The county has a long history. We've run an organic transit system since it started. So we're out amending routes on a fairly regular basis. And we're talking to those folks that are destinations, those folks that need service, the changing things that happen. I'll give you the most recent example, we were a little concerned about what's going to happen at the Hudson Valley Mall. Is it, is it going to end up being a critical destination, which it was in 2012? It may not be now. And when new facilities become constructed, for example, the waterfront destination and some of the city destinations, we will go out and do that. I would say that as the service, if the decision is made, as the service rolls out, the first thing we would do is say, these are the routes we're proposing, what do you think? The second thing we would do is, when the routes are in operation, is go back out, say, the first month, the first two months, and say, how are we doing?
Right.
And then beyond that, I would probably for the first year, every three to four months, go and say, what did we miss? Did we miss anything? Do we have to change anything, et cetera? And then going forward, the input from the city would be critical, and the input from the riders would be critical. We survey riders all the time. The other thing is, is one of the things that we know, is we actually collect all our ridership data electronically. So I can give you where people get on, because they have GPS locators, anything else, or not a vehicle.
You can look at UCAT right now, where are the UCAT buses at right now?
And we have an app, so it says you can figure out if you're in the city, you can figure out where the bus would be, when it's going to get to you. But we also, like, we don't, the reason we don't have riders on UCAT bus, looking at their, looking at their pickups, is we actually have that data. UCAT can pull that data off almost on a weekly basis, by fare, by time. So then you do seat miles, you look at revenue miles, you look at what routes are productive, what routes aren't productive, and then you start having the conversation, if a route's not productive, why? Is it running at the wrong time, but still in the right place? And we would anticipate that we would use that sort of, I hate to say the word big data, because it's not, but it's big data for us, but we'd use that data to essentially continue to tweak routes. And we've done that, and we've worked with others to do that as well. So we hope that what ends up happening is, is that when it comes time to make a decision, you would have had, A, an ample amount of time to essentially look at what's being thought about and proposed. And B is, is that we would have gone through at least a litmus test of what does the public think in terms of the routes. One of the reasons we decided to go the extra mile on this study was, we originally weren't going to do route optimization. We were simply going to say, this is what it looks like if we change routes, and use the 2012 study. And we thought about that, and we said, we think that the city and the public deserve an opportunity to say, what does this, what does an optimized route look like within the city? So you'll get a sense of that when we come back, and we'll come back to you with a draft, final draft report, if not a final report, which offers an opportunity for public input as well, as well as for decision makers' input.
Debbie, then Jim, and then Doug.
I have, I have two questions.
Well, if you got it back to begin.
Really? Como has been pushing for shared services. Is this something that would fit into what his initiative is, with some financial...
You can remember the council passed a resolution in support of the, the county is one of six counties that is eligible to apply for monies, it's a $20 million fund, for monies to essentially do shared service work, but you have to dissolve a level of government, and the county was proposing to dissolve the village of Ellenville. The council passed a resolution in support, this project was majored in there with regard to that. So there may be some funding for this project in that. How that funding used may be to sort of meet some of the issues relative to the capital needs that we may see with regard to this. So we may use it that way, we may not, and it depends upon what happens. In addition, there is some indication that even if you're not successful in the $20 million, you may have some of your projects funded by the governor's office. So the short answer to your question is yes.
And number two, you talked about buses making deals or having agreements with other counties as you go into the, you know, like...
It's not other counties, it's actually the state deo tip.
Well, the state deos, all right. So I'll say, I guess I had the resident wanting to know about the bus going into the train station in Poughkeepsie. The other issue now is Stewart Airport being quite the hub. Would it be beneficial for us to hook up with that? Because the, they call this, the travel is up, and a lot of people use, are using the airport. So is this something that would tie in?
One of the things that we can look at is, partners of Duchess County, excuse me, Orange County has a substantial number of park and ride facilities. Because of the trains that are down there, and because of the ferries that go across actually from Newark to Beacon, the shuttle service into those park and ride facilities, so that we don't have to go into the airport, we would end up, we would end up...
So the park and ride would take them actually into the area?
Yeah, and they'll be shut.
That was, like I said, and then the third thing is, we have a lot of people living in Kingston, there's no jobs in Kingston, they're commuting out of the area. And concern is having a reliable bus service, not to New York City, but some of the other outlined areas. Would this also...
I will tell you that we're not, we're not, at this time, we're not, what I would say to you at this time, this study doesn't envision new services to other counties, right? But it does, but the Transportation Council, along with UCAT, has envisioned new service, and we've shown that by the shuttle service that we've introduced between New Paltz and Rosendale, New Paltz to Poughkeepsie, as well as work with respect to the Kingston route that basically comes out of Kingston and goes down to Poughkeepsie. The other thing you may not know is, we actually provide subsidies to Trailways, so that Trailways can run increased service out of its Kingston station and other stations. We transfer about $1.5 to $1.8 million a year to Trailways to improve that services. And we do that on two bases. One is that the service is more frequent, so they run half-hour headways out of the Kingston station right now. And we also do that so that the fares remain pretty well solid with respect to that. We have not seen a fare increase by Trailways out of New Paltz because of some of the funding that we're dealing with that. The council was very much concerned that the residents of Ulster County have an opportunity for at least two ways to get to the city, and just to have to take the bus, which is why we actually got in a fairly heated discussion with Trailways about, actually, Trailways wasn't happy about us taking people to get on the train. MTA, effectively, was thrilled, but Trailways wasn't. So we had a very difficult discussion, but we worked it out, and that system, that system works. Trailways actually gave up the route. They've asked us if it was okay to give up, because we have some authority to talk to them about giving up routes. And we took it over because it wasn't profitable enough for them, and we think we can make it profitable.
I should also mention that we're part of what's called a transportation management area. We're required by federal law to work very closely with Orange County and Duchess County Transportation Councils in coordinating the congestion management process, and also the distribution of this federal aid that we've been talking about today, these portions of it. In our work with the TMA, we'll be doing a region-wide transit study within the next 12 to 18 months, I hope that's underway and completed. And we'll be looking at those specific issues, where should we be providing service outside of Ulster County as a region? How are we going to provide that service? And do the assets exist in order to provide additional services? So we'll be looking at that at a more macro level in the months ahead.
Just to touch on, just look at the financial benefit, if you're going to Stewart, that's money for the bus companies, it's money for Stewart's.
I will tell you, the cab drivers may not like limo guys. The amount of dollars that you take in for fares is less than 20%, probably less than 10% in most instances of your total cost. So we're not, we don't look at this, we look at this providing an important service, but we don't look at, we don't look at, and the same thing, quite frankly, with respect to Ulster County picking up people within the city of Kingston and letting them off. If we're worried about a dollar fifty fare, we're in a lot of trouble.
Tourism, you said tourism too.
So we really are focused, we're focused on, from the Transportation Council's perspective, we're focused on efficient use of federal resources and customer satisfaction. That's what we're focused on. Can we meet the needs of the customer? And can we meet, can we provide an efficient use of federal resources?
Okay, Jim?
Okay. Dennis, I was just wondering about the capital expenses. If we integrate with the county and our time left on, say, the bonding or the grant money on the buses and stuff, if the county, would they take over the existing, say, if there was six, the city owned it?
Right.
So you'd be responsible for those six years to make sure that...
That's correct.
For that amount of time.
What we haven't had a discussion about is, remember this, there's that little language in that transportation agreement, this is a no additional cost to the county? We haven't had that discussion. But...
I don't think there's a cost, but...
But there is, what I wanted to say is, there is a cost to the city now. And when we get all said and done, we, you know, being pragmatic people, we understand it would be somewhat, as efficient as this may be, the city is probably not going to say, we'd like to spend more money to transfer the system to you. We think that, we think that we're going to be able to essentially look at this and come out, you know, depending upon grant sources, we may be able to come out even without city dollars involved in this. But what I would say is, absent that, you're probably 2006, 2007 buses out there that you've got, so you figure 10 years on that, you know, you're pretty much, you know, and then another two, so by 19, 2019, 2020, you've got some, you know, we've had this conversation, quite frankly, with your controller and said, because we are asking questions in terms of, we program, we're programming our capital needs, our tip capital needs, program projects right now, 2022? 2022. So we look at the city, we say, what are you going to do for capital needs? And how are you planning on doing that if you're spending a lot of your dollars trying essentially to make sure that, and quite frankly, we get what the city's doing, it reduces the cost to the city's taxpayer.
It seems like you're cutting that gate bus and stuff, so I get you.
No, no. Understand what ends up happening here when you look at it, those cuts would not be in the city of Kingston.
All right.
And, and what they are is the change in spares. So you have a spare ratio that you maintain, we have a spare ratio that we maintain, if all of the sudden the buses are interchangeable in the system, you don't need the same spare ratio. So those are spare ratio issues, not cuts in terms of service.
Like, you have the same drivers, so I was wondering...
If there's one thing I want you to walk away from here is, is that we do not believe that any way, shape, or form, that service will be worse. Everyone is pushing about this, and if we can't make the service more efficient and more affordable to both parties, we haven't done our job, and we think we can do that.
One last question I had about was, are other major expenses, employees? Do you think the employees that transfer to the county, there'd be any funding available for like pension costs down the road?
You know, I...
I mean, that'd be a big...
I hate to negotiate, I hate to negotiate as part of, as part of a study. But we, what the study does lay out is, is that there are certain protections available for transit workers that are not available for normal workers. That's what the study, that's what the study lays out.
Doug?
First of all, thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you for having us.
This makes perfect sense to me, and I think if we do this, that we can eventually, you know, once it gets going, we can go into some of the, you know, the other layers that Debbie has asked about, Stewart Airport, and Park and Rise, and other sources of employment and so forth, so just totally, it just makes a good lot of sense. So I would ask, can you give me an overview, you know, what does it take to make this happen? What are the barriers to making it happen? And what kind of time scale do you see for this to get running?
And in a year, right?
Oh, I know, I think so. You know, I hate to do that because it's like throwing a number out when you're in the planning stages with respect to capital projects, and that becomes the number.
Well, I'll back off on the wind, I'll back off on the wind. But when, and I understand that's indeterminate, I understand that, but, you know, what keeps you up at night worrying about trying to make this happen? The barriers?
I really think that it's our job to give you enough information to make a decision that you're, that you can depend upon that information, that's what we're going to do. So I want to make sure that one of, when we say something, that we actually have some facts to back it up and be needed. I also, quite frankly, what keeps me up at night is more about public reaction, to make sure that the public understands what we're trying to do, and that they have a sense that what they're, what we, the effort here is to give them better service, more dependable service than they currently have now, not an effort to essentially to put themselves at risk of not having transit service. And that's why, quite frankly, I think both the city and the county came to Transportation Council and said, we want to take a good, hard look at this and put something on the table that we can mull over and talk about and have some discussions about, and at the end of the day, if we decide to go forward, at least we know where we're getting ourselves into. At the end of the day, if we decide to go forward, at least we know where we're getting ourselves into."
I've gotten three phone calls since Friday from city bus riders, which is essentially when this fact sheet hit the street. And there's a lot of anxiety among city bus drivers about whether the service will be maintained. And, and that is, without a doubt, a major goal here, is to maintain if not include service.
Okay, Tom? I have two questions. And back to the trolley that we had, you would not be taking it over if we went through this.
The, the short answer is, is that, I don't think there's anything I can say as a short answer.
We don't buy them trolley buses?
Well, the main thing is, is the trolley is behind its useful federal life, so we would, the city wouldn't incur no cost to keep it, and there's really no, no reason for the county to have to have it.
Because that is used by the school district to transport the kids to Dade Stadium and to their facilities. So that would be still, city would be, would be still in control of that.
Yep.
All right, and the other question is, if we do this scenario, one of these, we're giving up, we're giving up our, any, 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 uh...
Responsibility.
Responsibility, any, this, we, we give up our process of saying, "Well, you should have a route here, you should have a route here." This, right? We give that up once, if we went through one of these.
Well, you're also county resident.
Yeah, we're county resident. But I mean, you wouldn't be coming back to the common council, Kings County Council, and say, "Well, we want you guys to sign what the next route is," or et cetera, et cetera.
We would be eliminating, it would be really just the county. Let me, let me be very blunt on that, right? I haven't made a change in the routes in at least 10 years, right? So you, you gave it up, right? It's, it's done, you know? And, and don't quote me on the 10 years, it may be less than that, but it's been a long time since you made a change of routes. You know, you made many tweaks here, added a little bit of service here, but boy, I got to tell you, it's been pretty damn static. Pardon my being blunt about it.
But I just want to make sure, we went with one of these scenarios, two or three. Where, Kins, 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 is this given up on the transit?
The second thing is, what I talked about is, is that we're responsible to the travel. They have a voice in this. And we listen to those voices. We change service pretty regularly at the county level. We look at needs pretty regularly. So we do two things. One is, we're dads, and two is, we actually listen to them. People say, "We need to do this." The other thing is, is we have a lot of doubt. We, we're going to have a lot of doubt that you don't have, that you're, we're going to know whether routes are working or not working. So I would want to assure the city that the transit system would be as responsive as it's been out in the rest of the county, where we've changed routes, we go out and meet people. To give you a sense of that, our director of transit will actually go out and meet with businesses and design services to get people to those businesses. We're currently engaged in some discussions out of county right now to look at how we can provide service out of county to businesses that are looking for folks that, to work. The casino comes to it, is, is an excellent example, okay?
I'm just saying that, you know, not that you wouldn't provide a better service if we went with this. I'm just saying, Kingston, the city of Kingston, the common council, we wouldn't have a say. And like, that was bringing up going to Stewart Airport, we're not going to have a say on that anymore. As county residents, we have that, but not as a...
And we're not budgeting it.
Yeah, we're not budgeting it, that's what I wanted to make sure.
You know, I, I would say to you that we have a pretty good track record at the county level, listening to elected officials. And the county executive has responded to those requests. And so you, the, the question you're asking me is, will you have, could you say yes or no? That you, the, there's an obvious answer to that. Can you influence how, how service is provided? Of course you can, you know your constituents. Well, you know, we, we listen. We, we get the fact that you're, you're close to your constituents. If you're getting calls, we'll take a look.
Steve and Mary. Okay. Yeah, we've been at this for a while, so no matter what scenario we pick, I mean, I really think, I think you said, I mean, we can expect no worse service. It's going to be at least as good as it is now.
Yeah, I, I hope, I don't want it then to end up a quote, I saw Mr. Kimball sitting over here going, "Oh, no worse service! No, please, don't say that." What I'd like to say is, we anticipate that we'll be, we'll have a more efficient, more robust service that'll reduce headways within the city.
Yeah, I mean, and I agree with that. I, I think it will be a much more efficient thing. I will make a comment, I would put it in a question form, but I think it's hard for the lawyers to figure out. My concern from, from day one with this, you know, with the combination, is the phrase "with no additional cost to the county." I'm not quite sure what that means, and I would hate to see this all unfold. And at the end of the year, we get a bill for $100,000 because it exceeded, you know, the county's expenses by $100,000. Does that mean we're going to get billed? How, and I don't know if you have an answer, that might be, you know, more legal terms. But that's, that is my biggest concern.
Here's what I would, here's what I would say to you. There's going to be an agreement that you go out of business, right? You're going to say, "I'm going out of business." I don't know whether it's going to be an agreement, or we're going to say, "We're out of business." We're going to say, "If you do, here's what we've promised to residents in the city of Kingston and the common council in making that decision. Here's, here's the service revenue." We're going to have pretty good markers on what that costs, those costs are. You know, if somebody pushes, pushes us, or pushes the county pushes, and says, "We want you to sign an agreement that any additional costs are yours," then I would anticipate that the council will push back. But we want to try to reassure the county, as part of our work, that we've identified funding sources that can cover what's currently happening in the city and what that means. So we'll know if there's going to be a quote additional cost. I will tell you that right now, it's about $280,000, $300,000 is the, is the current cost to your transit system. We took a quick look at this in 2012 and said we thought we could do it for about $180,000. That, that was a quick look in 2012, and I, and we don't know whether those numbers, that was a little bit different service than we're proposing now. But that's, that's, it gives you a sense of what we, we thought we could do. And there's going to be some administrative savings to you and us, yeah, from, from this.
And Mary? I have two questions. Before us tonight with the council, we're having, we had a resolution for a reduction of fares on off-peak hours currently, to address this evening, and we have a base fare here in the ramp where city bus is a dollar, UCAT's about $1.50. Do we take into consideration what's in the city at all? Or we just go with the county's?
I would, I would say the simplest way to put this is, is fares are the least of your worries in terms of costs. I think when we did...
Well, the veterans and the disabled and seniors.
No, 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 I'm talking about in terms of worrying about if it's a dollar 50 or a dollar. My understanding is the reason we're rolling back fares is you have some issues with respect to how they're advertised. So I think that, I think you have some federal issues associated with, because you have to advertise change of fare, most of the things. And that's why they're, that's why this discussion's ongoing. But I don't see, I don't see us, we get the fact that when we look at your riders, we get the fact that who uses them. You know, your ridership is rarely dependent upon a lot of captured riders. We get that fact. We don't punish those kinds of people. There are things that we can do that can improve service and, and increase costs. And that is, is we don't charge on a rider basis. UCAT can charge agencies, some of the agencies that are using the system, we run into an agency situation. They can pay bare fees because they get reimbursed, they get a Medicaid or Medicaid reimbursement, those kinds of things. And then, that's just a level of sophistication, understanding how to bill, and it's not, and it's not reflective on cost to the customer.
My second question is, for the city of Kingston, if we do agree and we do go out of business, of course, our fee schedules have to be revised. And I'm not sure what it has to do with charter or the city code, like, does a change need to make there? Like, what does it say? Does it have to be a referendum? Does it have to go out to a couple of votes? Do those things come into play? Because it could be a change in charter, and usually a charter change is a referendum to the code. So does that have to go on the ballot in the next year?
Those are all, those are all big, all big questions. I don't know if we're there yet, but definitely.
Well, we're not, and I mean, it's all in draft, but that's, like I said before, my two questions, if you ever thought, because can we just go out of business without...
I mean, I'm sure it's more complicated than that. Right, that's...
My question, world's greatest.
We, we didn't know any, any charter barriers, but that, that was a quick, quick, it's not mentioned as a, as an agency that has been there that you have to amend the charter business. And one would presume that if you decided to go out of business, you, you're really just transferring, transferring assets.
But it would have to be a charter, even if it's not?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be that firm on saying you have to. We, we didn't pick up any of that. We'll have an attorney look at it, but we didn't...